What the heck, you need a tape for? Off your date, oh, or a skirt?
Oh, not that kind of date.
Oh, okay. It may look funny, but.
Not yet. We're good? My golly, we are now. Alright. We'll get started. Clint's gonna be just a few minutes late, he's on his way. But he'll be here in just a few minutes, but we'll go ahead and get started. We have a quorum. Francis City Council meeting, May eighth, twenty twenty-five. We'll start with a pledge of allegiance. And I guess I'll take care of that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Um, if everyone's okay with it, I'd like to take a couple of items out of order. And we'll bump the budget down. And um. Start on. Well, let's do, sorry, I'm jumping way ahead. Let's take care of the consent agenda, minutes and uh. Bills. Also, I have. We had, we had budgeted for. We'd budgeted for a side-by-side for Public Works. And, and um. I have a quote for that. It's in the, in the budget, but we need council approval for that, so. It's here. So for what they're requesting is twenty-one. Twenty-four, four eleven. So if you have that, we need to approve that with uh. Probably do it.
With the register?
Probably do it separate, but, but as part of the consent agenda. And then also, a. We've discovered that our current copier is so outdated that we can't even buy ink anymore. And so I have a quote for a new one. That is nine thousand dollars. So. This is the same company that we've been using. Cool. So there's a nine thousand dollar copier, which is also in the budget, which would need to be approved or not approved, but. Need to be considered in this uh. Portion of the agenda. Willing.
I have a couple of questions on the check register. The uh, one item for. No, maybe I don't. For ID electric. Do we get reimbursed for that generator work from either one of the developers? I see this one, it says Lambert. I didn't look.
So Lambert, no, that's us. Foothills, yes.
Okay. I saw two numbers and I just goofed up. I drew the assumption one was for Foothill.
Yeah, we have to build some.
Go ahead, okay.
Right. Any other questions on the check register? Or minutes?
I'll make a motion that we approve the check register dated May eighth. In the minutes from our April tenth meeting. In addition, that we approve. The cost estimate for the side-by-side for the construction crew or maintenance crew.
Okay.
In addition. The nine thousand dollar cost for the, a new printer.
Alright. Is there a second?
Aye.
Okay. Sam?
Aye.
Mayor's aye.
Aye.
Shanna? Okay, that's done. Here's the check register. If you'll put your initials on it. Whoop, sorry. Thanks, sir. I don't think we need to initial these. It's just being the minute, so that's approved. Okay. Next item is the public comment section for items not on the agenda. We'll go ahead and open the public comment. Portion of the meeting. Again, for items that are not on the agenda, if there's any public comment, we'll open that time up now.
Well, isn't it just the. If it's not on the agenda.
Right.
But.
For public hearings only, or?
Yeah, if it's only a public hearing on the, I mean, they can talk on it if it's.
This, this is for anything that you don't see on the agenda today, you could come up and bring up that there's potholes somewhere you want fixed or whatever, right?
Okay. Well, I thought they could come up and talk on that because it's not a public. Public hearing, but they can come and.
Right.
Talk about it right now.
Oh, yeah.
They could talk on it, right?
It doesn't, right. It doesn't necessarily have to not be on the agenda. If you have a comment that's on something on the agenda, feel free.
Because there's not a place down below where.
Because there isn't a public.
While we're discussing it, okay.
Alright. If there's no public comment, we'll go ahead and close that portion of the meeting and we'll move to. Uh, item number five. This is where I'd like to take a couple of things out of order, bump the budget down a little bit. And I'm gonna take item B first, the Francis Farms septic. Scott?
Alright.
Well, hold on. Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm fine with it.
Now you can go, Scott.
Okay. So um, we received an application for the Francis Farms subdivision. It's a three lot subdivision located at the end of um, Country Lane, back over here. In our code, it, with the new subdivision change, it won't come to city council, it just goes through the planning commission, that process that we approved. But part of our um, code requires that if you're not within um, three hundred feet of the sewer and can't connect. You have to get city council approval to um, do septic tanks. So that's what they're here tonight, to see if you guys will grant them approval to do septic tanks. The rest of the subdivision, all the other homes on Country Lane are on septic tank. There will be a note on the plat that will state that when's, when and if sewer's there, they will connect and pay the required fees and all that, so.
So you say the rest of Country Lane is already on septic tanks?
Yes, yeah. We've allowed that subdivision, just because it's, the, the closest sewer is on the other side of the dip. So it'd be quite a thing and it'd require a lift station or a pressure sewer or something. So. In the past, they've allowed um, septic tanks for the other subdivision and this, this being a smaller subdivision with smaller lots. You know, if it was a twelve lot subdivision, then we'd say, no, we, we probably had to do sewer. But with bigger lots, um, I think septic tanks will work here. So the applicants here, if you guys want to say anything, if not.
Overall, as Scott said, bigger lots, uh, the closest sewer is nearly half a mile away over here. So it'd be a pretty big financial burden there for, for three lots to get sewer that far. And uh, they're, they're doing per test, so that'll, that'll be included on the plat as the. If they're passing per test on all the lots, on each lot, so should be good to go there and ask for your consideration.
Thanks. And that's one thing I feel to mention. In addition to the city council, ultimately, they have to get Summit County approval to do the septic tanks. Cause their health department approves those, so they'll have to meet all the requirements of the Summit County Health Department on septic tanks, so.
Right? Any questions, concerns?
Does this require a motion?
Yes. Yeah, require city council approval to do it.
Any, yeah, any questions or comments on the septic? I'll say I generally don't like it, but I understand why in this situation it's. Appropriate, but. I mean, it would be cool if you just put sewer in.
That'd be cool if they could afford it as a sewer and random.
That's right.
So, okay, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the septic at Farms at Francis.
Francis Farms. Farms at Francis, sorry.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Alright. Alright, you, you're welcome to vote if you want, but up to you. Alright, Sam?
Aye.
Mayor's aye. Clayton?
Aye.
Shanna? Okay.
You're my second, Clayton.
Yep.
That's done. Okay, um. The next thing, if we can, if everyone's okay with taking it out of order, I'd like to do Frontier Days next, that way Ray can leave. She's here for that uh, conversation. She's got some other things going on, so if we can get that out of the way. Thanks, guys. She can get out of here. We have. We have the, whoa. I got the poster here. Yeah, we have the poster, but we also have the rodeo contract. Did it get thrown in here?
I didn't see it.
I did not see it.
Yeah, would you? So the, the rodeo contract for two-day rodeo is fifteen thousand, which I think is less.
I was gonna say, wasn't the other one sixty or so?
I, yeah, which I think is less, so.
Yeah.
I, I think it's less money. So that, that's a full uh, two-day rodeo, Friday and Saturday. Includes as usual, ten barebacks, ten saddle broncs, twelve poles. And then of course, all the time event stuff. And. So anyway, I, I do think that that's cheaper. It's basically the same contract as before, except that it's a. A little bit uh, of variation in that it's a two-day full rodeo rather than the rough stock deal on Monday. At a total of fifteen thousand. So as part of this discussion. We just need to approve. Or I guess the council needs to give me permission to enter into this contract with Circle J for the rodeo. So that they can get it on the schedule. Um, outside of that, the poster, we just need to make sure that our schedule is how we want it. Um, everything's set so that uh, Ray can move forward on. Getting everything set as far as um.
So.
Whatever we're gonna have going on.
Can I make one recommendation that we start the test and the, the rodeo at the same time of the evening?
Nope.
We did that because of the, the concert thing?
I would be okay with. I, I'm not married to that necessarily. I, I just. I guess my concern would be. That um. We don't want that to be. Where the heck, we don't want it to. Well, no, I'm trying to not go too late.
I guess we could start Fridays at seven also.
Yeah, I think just so that they're the same. That might. Not, we might have less confusion with people.
So we got seven thirty and seven, is that what we've got set here now? I, I think we could probably make whatever works. Um. But you're right, that's why we were doing it, was because of the concert, because if you do, you don't want to start that concert too early.
Yeah.
But you need it over with. That is why we did that.
Could you go five for the concert, or is that?
I think that's what our thought was, but that, but that means that the rodeo's gonna start. Basically as the concert's getting over, so you're gonna have a hard time getting people from the concert into the rodeo. Which was why.
We just start Saturdays at seven thirty-two? A lot of rodeos, you know, start at eight.
So it's better, I would say it's, I would say it's better to kick Saturday's back than.
I wasn't, I didn't read this and I was like, okay, maybe. So yeah, I think maybe start the other one at seven thirty also.
I tend to see people getting mixed up and coming one night and I think they're early in the morning, which is just the opposite.
Yeah, so, so if we're gonna do that, I would suggest that we make Saturday a half hour later to. Or, or eight. I mean, is eight too lo- eight gets pretty.
It gets pretty.
It gets pretty long.
Long and it does get pretty cold.
So yeah, that's the thing is.
But that's not uncommon for the cowboys and cowgirls to start a rodeo at eight. I'm just coming from the cowboy's point of view, but.
Agreed.
Seven thirty, would you make it better for our old cowgirls?
I, I mean, I agree with you. I don't think they care, but.
Yeah, but our.
For spectators.
Spectators might wanna.
Do we, do we, you.
I think seven thirty would be.
We get wild if it's at eight. Yeah. Yeah. Okay, so we can change it both nights to seven thirty.
Then we have, just looking at this.
Yeah.
On Saturday, we're gonna have an hour at the end of the live music until the rodeo. I don't see that to be a huge problem. You?
No, I wouldn't think so.
Just an hour of all?
Yeah, people grab food or do whatever. Um, okay, so then uh. I guess the, the other thing we gotta talk about is the, the stuff during the day on Saturday. I am exploring or trying to explore the option of a. I don't know if it's Little Buckaroo or a Junior Rodeo Association of some kind anyway to bring them in for.
Maybe a Little Riches.
It might be those Little Riches that I was talking about.
The Junior.
GRS.
Oh, the Ju, the Junior NFR.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Whatever it is. I don't know. I, I got a number, I'm trying to get.
There are a lot of junior rodeos.
There is. Um, anyway, I'm, I'm exploring that option. If, if you guys want me to continue to explore that, that would. It wouldn't necessarily bring spectators, but that would make the place busy. There would be people here, mostly contestants and their families, but there would be something going on. And that was kind of my thought with that.
You know I'm all in for anything rodeo.
Okay, so if, if we can explore that and make that work, we'll do that. If not, what do we want to do as an alternative? Um, and I'll get that ironed out in the next day or two. I just sent them another text this, uh, this evening, so. But if that doesn't shake out, we wanna pursue this car show deal, we wanna do something else, is there something that we want to do that, that fills that time? Cause I'm concerned about not filling the time.
Then, are you gonna have a junior rodeo for two days? Saturday and Monday?
Um, no, it would just be Saturday.
Then what do we do on?
The junior rodeo, like the mutton busting and the.
Yeah, so Monday are.
Wasn't we gonna combine that with our horse games?
Yeah, yes.
We're doing the horse games after.
Oh, we are.
So it's consistent with how we both.
Yeah.
We've just.
And then we'll do all the horse stuff back.
So we're gonna have the kids there riding their sheep and things?
Yes.
Cause they usually.
Go put yourself up, come on your feet and then come back with your horses?
Yes, because most of them don't ever come back with horses.
That's what I'm saying, we'll have nobody there.
Well, I.
They'll have the kids that wanna participate.
But I wonder though, the uh, the groups.
I thought we were gonna combine them.
I, I think it would end up being. Mostly combined. If you do. The problem is that not everybody that does the kids scrambles, kids races and stuff, will do the horse show. But. Pretty much everybody that does the horse show will do the races.
Yeah, they'll stay and run, but.
So I don't know.
I thought maybe we could do that after, but the, if we're gonna split it, do the horse games right after the junior rodeo.
Well, that makes it, that makes it more or less combined, which was what we've talked about before.
And maybe, I don't know, let's just throw this out there. If the Little Riches or whatever doesn't work out, which I think, I hope will, that would be my best bet.
Yeah, cause. Yeah.
Maybe we could do more mutton busting and then take the top three into the rodeo.
Into the.
The, the RMPR rodeo. Just have it be one of the clown, you know what I mean? Have it be.
Oh, I see, yeah.
During.
Possibly.
The only, maybe the top three or maybe the top five.
Oh, we'll try and do that.
I could talk to him and see.
Hmm.
I mean, before we get it set in stone, we will.
Hold on, how? Oh. You're saying if they bring that other association in?
If they don't, to fill the slot.
Well, how would we? So you're, you're thinking that you would do the. The junior rodeo on Saturday then?
Well, no, just. I don't know.
Well, you won't know the top three because they're on Monday.
Cause they're on Monday, so that won't work. Unless we move it to there and did it Monday, but we wanted all the kid stuff on Monday, so.
Yeah.
I was just thinking that might give them more of a, hey, I could write in a real rodeo, you know?
How, how long do you think it would run? From eight to eleven, what time do you think? Cause I do, I do, I am a little concerned about um, the kids activities getting bumped too far down. And, and it becoming too late? Or do you think it won't matter? I mean, I, I know like, I've got a few family members coming from out of town, so they like. Of course, they would like it earlier, but it's not just for them. I'm just thinking, if it's too late, people that gotta travel may not stay.
They might not stay since there's nothing else going on after, yeah.
You know, kind of to Suzanne's point, puts. The horse games is gonna be more local folks. Than folks from not in the valley?
Yeah. Oh, it is. It's just to kind of have fun, so.
So does it.
Okay.
Well, I, I, and I'm not advocating for one way or the other, I'm just trying to figure out what works best.
I'm trying to remember how long it usually takes, cause those kid activities, we get through those pretty darn best. Like the horse games and the junior rodeo.
And we, and we wanna do the junior rodeo first because it's early enough, you don't overheat it.
Yeah.
So I don't know. I don't know how to do that.
I thought we, yeah, I. I don't know. I thought we had it combined and.
Well, we did.
Well, you talked about doing it, and then Katie and I go talked about it, and we threw the beans, all the people were coming.
They threw it, ain't you?
Okay. Cause the horse games.
And if you guys wanna do it that way.
Well, no, I mean, the horse games have just never been Monday morning. They've always been.
They're always on Saturday, right?
On Saturday. So that's why I thought we were gonna combine it, have all the kids be on Monday, so.
Well, we still, we still are. It'll still be on Monday.
Both the horse games and the arena Saturday, and the pack and all the kids games on Monday.
It'd still be on Monday, it's just a matter of what's time slot is taken in.
So are you talking about like mutton busting and then do a kid scramble and then while they're loading the sheeps for something else? You're doing the things in between and then?
What if, what if we did that?
We've always done mutton busting and then.
And then steers, they have the steers that they come and ride.
And then they do the kids races and then it's been done.
And then you do like the water racing?
Yeah.
The rescue race or high race?
That's during the rodeo.
Rodeo, that's done.
That's not the kid or the horse games. That's like the racing and.
Relay study.
Relay race and.
Keyhole, all that stuff.
Yeah.
So.
A.
That is, that, that does bring up a. An option that might. That might work. And that would be to combine that junior rodeo and, and the kids games and the horse show kind of all together. So the horse stuff would come toward the end of that. But then you could do, you could do some mutton busting, steer riding, and some foot races. And then, the only problem is logistically, filling the arena full of kids and emptying the arena.
And then emptying and do we come back out, yeah?
But if you do it in, in age groups, that's how they used to do it.
Yeah, we do it in age groups.
Yeah, we, we do. But that's how we used to do it, was like, they'd call in one age group and then clear everybody out.
That's how we did it last year.
I just remember there being a line of kids and we were just.
For the junior rodeos or something.
We only thought to start the age group through the game.
For the races.
Running for the races.
Yeah, when he's talking about.
And then we go the next weekend.
Were they running in the, in the arena rather than on the grass?
Last, last year.
The last two years, we've been on the grass.
Isn't a lot.
It works good on the grass. I don't know, I don't know how you, how you see that.
I'm gonna stop too, um.
Did you do?
If you wanna do your kids races and the horse thing at the same time, or do your kids races on the grass and the horse stuff, then you do it.
Well, I don't think you wanna do it at the same time, cause I don't think everybody that does, again, I don't, everybody that does the kids races isn't gonna do the horse show. But everybody that does the horse show is gonna do the kid racing.
What is the horse games? I don't.
It's just, it's just kind of a fun, it's basically a horse show, it's just for fun. So they do age groups for barrel racing. And they'll do some uh, what they call keyhole, where you, you run down, have to go through an alleyway, turn a circle and come out, things like that, so.
Does that have to be Monday or could that be Saturday?
Like a musical horseshoes or something.
It could, it's, it's, it has been Saturday. Um, generally. So you could put it back on Saturday.
Cause even if we did, like, if you do your rodeo thing, that's not gonna work, because you're gonna have that in there Saturday.
Yeah, if we get that junior rodeo then.
Right.
But if you don't, and it's a car show, you can run that and a car show at the same time.
Easily. Easily.
If we do a talent show just on Monday, the queens were giving the judging, right?
Yeah, they judged it for you last year, right?
Yeah, and that worked out good, but it was close.
Yeah.
Cause they were getting done, so we'll just keep that in mind when we're, when we do the stuff. You know, it's Saturday, we need to bump the talent show a little bit. I just wanna make sure we're thinking of that too.
Oh, okay.
Cause there is a pretty preoccupied in the morning with the kid stuff, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, so, um.
Well.
Here we are stuck.
Here we are stuck again, yeah.
Does, does junior rodeo, would it fill the three-hour gap that you have in here for the car show on Saturday?
If we get the Little Riches or whatever?
No, the one that.
All the other working?
And do it on Saturday instead? I don't thi, I don't think we can do it in the afternoon, it's too flipping hot.
Especially for his sheep.
Yeah, the sheep, you'll overheat them. So it needs to be in the morning.
That was a dumb suggestion.
Yeah, well, I didn't, you know, get an issue with it. Terrible judgment.
I'm known for that.
Okay, so, just going down through here real quick then. So we've got the, the concert from five thirty to seven, is that gonna work or do we want it at five?
Well, you were worried about too early.
I was worried about too early.
So I think that's fine, cause we were bumping the rodeo back to seven thirty.
Seven thirty.
To seven thirty, that's right. Okay, so we'll leave that. We'll go down. Saturday's good, Slack will be at nine. Um, are, are we gonna wanna do the barrel racing jackpot on Saturday?
Yeah, right after the Slack.
That's how they're gonna do that? Okay. So that needs to stay there. Uh.
Hiking the money shoot on onsite.
We'll leave double check, body text sort of, but I'm pretty sure she was.
Right, yeah, those are not onsite, so that doesn't matter.
Money shoot, uh, three P M is where it wants to stop at.
Wants it to end at three?
Yeah, and he doesn't want to do it on Sunday. He said it was last year, so it just wants to Saturday.
Okay.
Just Saturday, ten to three?
Yeah.
Whoops.
Oh, the money shoot, you said?
Yeah.
Okay, so. The money shoot will be ten to three. The money shoot will be ten to three. Eleven to nine thirty, that's concessions, noon, so that's, that's the spot we gotta talk about is, if we can't get that junior rodeo deal. Do we want, is a car show what it's gonna be?
Well, I talked to that one, I don't remember if I told you or not, but he said, talk to Jake over at the Car Quest, he's the one that does them all in the valley.
Oh.
The car shows, Car Quest?
Yeah, just in Camus.
The, yeah.
He's the one that puts them all together.
Okay, so.
I think the car show, where?
I mean, it brings people around, it's something to do.
It brings people, yeah. The one they have on the, in the Camus Park, it's always full.
There's usually people there, I agree.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, so if you, if you did that and the horse games. How long do the horse games last?
Couple hours.
Couple, a couple hours maybe?
Oh, I think that's what I meant to take the Saturday, not the rodeo, cause horse games don't take the sheep.
Right.
Yeah.
But that's the little britches or whatever slot too, possibly.
Possibly, but if, I wish I, those suckers would, I was hoping I would have an answer for that by tonight, but.
The little britches obviously goes with the theme of frontier days for us with the rodeo and stuff, but if we can't get them, I think the car show would be a second, a very.
Yeah. Right. I mean, honestly, you could be doing the car show anyway.
Right, sure.
I thought we were talking about doing that on Saturday.
That's what we're talking about. That is. Noon to three, we have question mark.
So I mean, if, if we want a car show, we can, cause it's not gonna take up any, it's not gonna interfere with that little britches rodeo anyway, so the car show, if we wanna do it, we could do it anyway.
Right.
Put cars on the soccer field, on the grass, something.
Yeah, they won't be in the arena, so they won't be looking anything over there.
Yeah, so we could do, we could do that, no problem.
And who did you say it was, Jake?
At Car Quest.
At the Car Quest?
In Camus.
Is it Jake or Jason?
One or the other.
Jason.
It's probably Jason.
It's probably Jason, he does both Car Quest, Heber and this one, right, is the manager?
Okay.
Yeah, and, out in the basin too.
Oh, he does, okay.
Okay, so, should we just leave the car show there and then we'll add these other things if they work? I mean, if, if it doesn't work out and we don't have that little britches, we could bump that. Kids horse show to Saturday afternoon.
Yeah, that would fill that slot.
And that would take care of that, you wanna do that?
Let's plan on that, if we have little britches, we'll work something out for Monday for the junior rodeo slash horse show slash kid activities.
I like it, and then, and then Monday will be all kid stuff and wrapping up by noon or one o'clock whenever it works out.
Well.
All right, you got that?
One thing I just thought of though, the car show at Camus Park, they have vendors, are we gonna want that big old?
We have, we have vendors on Saturday as well.
We're gonna roll going with it? No, huh?
We have vendors on Saturday as well.
Well, yeah, but the show here, they have other, like, that's where I got the, you know, corn dog guy.
Uh-huh.
And then they have vendors that sell trinkets and clothes and.
Right, well, and we'll have that going on too.
And our concessions will be there.
And I would think we would probably wanna put that car show.
Over here, over there with, with all that stuff. Yeah, cause we don't have any, we don't have any bounce houses on Saturday.
No, everything's on.
Right, just on Monday.
Just on Monday.
So we could fill that over there with.
Go back over there, so.
Right, but.
Only on.
On Saturday, but that, but that's the thing, is you would want, you would want the car show and the vendors together so that one helps support the other.
Saturday.
Yeah.
All right, is that what we're gonna do?
Okay, so, when we mail out the flyers.
Yep.
Will list the car show and kids events to be determined, or how do you want that listed?
Give me a couple of days and we'll know.
Okay.
And then we'll adjust it as we need to.
Okay.
Cause if, if we don't get that little britches deal, we'll just bump the horse games to Saturday afternoon at the same time as the car show.
Okay.
And that'll fix it.
Okay, and then we did talk about a local only ticket purchase game?
Yes.
Yeah.
I think that was down at the bar.
How do we wanna do that? How do we wanna do it and when?
We're gonna wanna do it sooner than Monday.
So when's Oakley do it? They've already done it?
They've already done it, they start.
Yeah, they're, we.
Their rodeo's beginning of July, they started.
Right, so like, how many months do they give people, three, four?
Maybe three.
Which means we'd have to be in June.
They take in all their melan orders first, and then I think they just did the gym.
And how are we gonna do that? Just send it out to Water Bill or, and post it on Facebook and stuff for, if you're in the valley, come get your tickets? So I'd say let's.
And Suzanne, how did Oakley do it? Did you get, cause I know they had a local.
I didn't get anything.
Did you get a notice in your Water Bill?
No, no, so I, I don't know well.
It was just. Oh, okay.
I don't get anything from locally city, cause we're not many of our sources.
Oh, okay, I just thought, since you live there, maybe you would know, if that even worked, they look.
I saw, I saw, I saw on the Facebook, kinda have people up the canyon asking me if I could get them tickets, because hopefully we'll include them.
Okay. Yeah, it was literally Oakley City.
But they expect them to come help.
Yeah, okay, okay, I was just wondering how they.
Well, so I think, I think our, I think our locals only will be anyone within the valley.
You have a lot. Camus Valley.
Yeah, if you're in this valley.
I think word of mouth will work for that, I mean, if we do the Water Bill too, like, that's just adding a couple of sentences.
Yeah, I think, maybe Facebook and Water Bill, that could.
We'll probably have to do a postcard, I don't know if you can do our new Water Bill postcards, oh, yeah, cause they're so.
Did we get any, no, Katie's not here, did we, did we get any money from their restaurant?
I don't think, I don't think they have ordered it yet.
We'll just know next week.
Sounds like they might have something.
It sounds like we're doing something.
Cause then that could pay for a postcard or something.
Right.
Yeah.
All right, so what do we wanna do then, in June?
All right, I would, even if it was like, yeah, early July.
First one of June, yeah, end of June.
Give it two months?
I think we can put them online for the first part of July, I'm just.
So let's do it.
Give them five days, one week?
A week before they go online?
Okay.
Week or two, okay, all right, so, uh, then the times should all be good, Saturday's rodeo will be seven thirty. Sunday. Then we'll be going anything except for the movie night, right? Slack, Slack will be gone, Camus Valley Lions Club deal's gonna be not on Sunday.
Oh, it's not, I think I moved to.
No, they're only doing Saturday, is that what you said?
Yes, yep, um, let's see, veterans thing, we're doing that again, hometown events is the same time, right, around seven o'clock?
Yeah, yeah.
Do you wanna say that something on us?
Uh, no, it'll be, it'll be at seven thirty at the, the start of the rodeo.
Seven thirty, okay.
On, on Saturday or Friday?
Both, uh.
Saturday and Monday, right?
Saturday and, uh, Friday and Saturday this, this time, cause the one, yeah, we changed that.
You're not, you're not only on Monday.
Monday, we said the both?
Yes.
And now it'll be just.
And now it's just gonna be two rodeos.
Right, okay.
Right. All right.
Are we getting the skydivers again?
Yeah.
Yeah. For just one night?
Yeah.
Or will, are they coming all?
I usually s, probably just one night, um, I schedule them for both, and then we can.
Pick which one.
Well, then we gamble a little on the weather, so, cause if they get to Heber and they get weathered out, we have to pay them. So usually what I do is schedule them for both Saturday and Monday, and then have them jump Saturday. With Monday as an alternative.
With Monday as an alternate, and if it's a storm and.
Yeah. So probably we'll do the same thing here.
Do them Friday and then.
Do them Friday, but then have them as Saturday as an alternate, I'd love them both nights, but that's.
Have you found a veteran?
Oh, yeah, I got a couple of places.
I was just curious, I mean, I just, I know quite a few of you, need any ideas, so I'll throw some names out there.
Okay.
No, no, we got a list, but, you know, let's connect, you know.
Okay.
All right, so we got everything covered?
Um, movie, you guys wanna be part of the selection?
We need to, we need to pick that.
Eight seconds.
Oh, eight seconds?
Can we talk about?
That's just, that's an old joke, you had it here.
How long's it been though? Been at least three years.
Yeah. Didn't we talk about open range too?
Open range, yeah.
Yeah, that's a joke.
Unforgiven.
Yeah.
There you go.
All right, yeah, we'll, uh.
Get a little frost to come.
Coffee audience has gotta be kid friendly, right? Dang it.
Well, we did Top Gun last year, it was a little.
You did?
Just one section, Top Gun Maverick, wasn't it? There was one.
Yeah.
Was it Willy Wonka, wasn't it?
No, last year was Top Gun.
Oh, two, two, two years ago was Top Gun.
Two years ago.
Wasn't two years ago?
Two years ago.
I don't know what you.
It was a good show.
Willy Wonka.
No, it was Willy Wonka last year.
Yeah, I think you're right. All right, so, yeah, we probably oughta, we probably oughta pick a movie by next month.
Yeah.
For sure, so Brent can get us the rights.
And I'm, I'm like serious on the eight second one, are you guys still against Saturday or not?
I'm not, I never was.
Because I could probably, I mean, I'm not gonna guarantee you, I could probably get a frost to come here.
I, that, that shouldn't be that, yeah, I was gonna say, that shouldn't be too hard.
Josh Frost, world champion, I, I know him very well personally, I could probably swindle him into coming and we could.
You know. If you, if you can pull that off, I think that'd be good.
Hey.
I like that.
I like that.
If he, if he'd be here Sunday night and we showed eight seconds, if he was here.
Maybe even both Joe and Josh, but, yeah.
But they were here to sign some autographs for some kids and stuff, that'd be a good deal.
Wait, it's Josh, I, and Joe, oh, I'll have them both come if they will, okay.
Yeah, whatever, see what you can do.
It's for Sunday.
I think that'd be good. For Sunday night. All right.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so now, uh, if you guys wanna just give me permission to sign the contract.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we allow Jeremy to sign the contract for Circle J rodeo.
Second.
Uh, Clint?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Ray is aye.
Aye.
All right, done deal. Okay. Thanks, Ray.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you?
Sponsored letters, my name.
Yeah, we'll probably need to do some in-person follow-up on that stuff.
I've got a list for follow-ups for you guys that I'll, I'm putting together contact and address of all members for you.
Perfect.
Um, and I'll shoot that to your email if that's okay.
Yeah, please do.
Okay, all right.
Does this have a second page or is this, cause it looks like.
Not all that came, the second page is blank.
All right, well, there's a place for them to sign, but not for me, so.
Not a blank page.
No, that's all right. I'll just tell them it's signed here, you can have this back. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Should we go out of order again and do foothills of Francis Gate area of disturbance?
We might as well.
Is that you guys?
Yeah.
All right, let's do that one next. All over the place, foothills of Francis Gate area of disturbance discussion, Scott, you got that?
Yep. All right. Um. In the foothills of Francis Gate design guidelines, A O D is defined as the portion of lot within which all improvements, including structures, decks, wall, walks, landscapes, improvement, grading, drainage, wells, drainage fields, parking, garage, fencing. And all mechanical area must be located and is the only area of the lot where alterations of or disturbance to the natural landscape may occur. Developer entered in a written annexation agreement with Francis Town on December twentieth, two thousand six, at this time, the development was known as the Butters Annexation or the Tifton Hill Subdivision. Some of the main components of the annexation agreement related to preserving the natural landscape and wildlife in this area. These conservation obligations are as follows, conduct wildlife study to determine the, and address impacts to wildlife by the development. Make modifications to development to protect wildlife as determined by the town, conduct soil, slope and erosion study to determine and address impacts to health and safety. Create a record of conservation easement on a hundred twenty mountainous acres adjacent to the development within the unincorporated county. Create a record and create and record a conservation easement on a twenty foot wide buffer zone around the entire perimeter of the development. Wildlife habitat memo attached said that the division of wildlife identified the property as crucial winter range for mule deer, mule dealer, deer and elk. Based on the findings of the wildlife study and the desire of the town to limit the visibility of homes on the hillside, the town and the developer agreed to a twelve thousand five hundred square foot area of disturbance for each lot. The heights of structures on certain lot was also reduced to limit visibility of the homes. The subdivision plot identifies several key, several of the key conservation requirements, the O D, building height restrictions, reductions. Twenty foot preservation conservation mean around the development, open space and natural drainage given. The plot would need to be amended to change the O D. The foothills at Francis Gate design guidelines would also need to be updated to change the O D. Currently, the design philosophy says at the heart of the foothills of Francis Gate community is a desire for the land and the structures to blend together to preserve and protect. Design scheme for a scenic value of the project, no improvements of any kind or modification of the natural condition of the land within the development parcel shall be permitted without prior review. And written approval from the design review committee. In section two point two, the building envelope case, it says the building envelope concept, also known as the area of disturbance, is a major component of the philosophy of the site. Planning for each of an individual lot, the area of disturbance exclusive of the driveway may not exceed twelve thousand five hundred square feet. So, um, we've got the, um. The wildlife study attached and the plot study, um, attached. Um, the developer is asking to, um, reduce or increase the, um, area of disturbance. Um, I'll let them talk to that, but when the, like the Katie staff report says, when the subdivision was approved. Um, they tried to have the area of disturbance and that so that it keeps some view shed open and place for the mule dealer and elk to go, so. Um, but I'll let them come up and talk about what they want to do. Thanks.
Yeah, I'm Keith Smartell, I'm with Ella and Home Builders, so I'm, uh, building in the neighborhood, um, hopefully future residents will, so, so, wild bill there. Uh, in regards to this neighborhood, uh, it is noted that there's twenty acres within the development as well as an additional hundred and twenty acres that was required to be purchased for the preservation of wildlife. Um, on the migration map, it does, doesn't show any macro to be put on map, it shows that there's frogs selling the eagle. That's kind of the higher migration area in that area and up on that side of the mountain. Um, in regards to the, the acreage, I have here kind of what we're proposing to increase these two, if you wanted to.
Is that?
And that was in that A D U.
Yeah, I've got that right here, it's up on the screen right here.
Okay. Um, this would also help to build those A D U detach, um, for off-road vehicles, off-road toys, R Vs. Um, I know that most of neighborhoods now in fact is, that's a big, uh, key point of what.
Hey, would you mind pressing that little button on there, on the bottom of the base?
Oh.
Thanks.
Can you hear me now? Uh. Uh, so we would like to be able to allow that on that higher caliber, uh, buyer up there, um, to allow for detaches and A D U units to be built. Um, with these homes as well, some of these lots are pretty big, um, with a, with a minimal A O D. Um, it does show on some of these smaller acreage, you know, where we would like to keep it at that twelve five, but as the acreage gets bigger. We're looking for a little bit of a bigger area of disturbance there, um. And then there was the one that was specific lot thirty seven, it's the ten acre lot on the, on the property. And negotiating on possibly being able to get that one widened for maybe a possible small arena or a big barn, being that that's the largest acreage on the, on the property. Um, that's kind of our goals there, um, and reasoning why we believe an A O D would be, uh, highly appeasable to a buyer. Um, as well as noticing on the website, Francis's importance on A, A D U units. Um, so we would love to be able to allow those, uh, buyers up there to as well be able to, to do that. Uh, and that's it for me, did you have?
Yeah, A O D.
You said your name.
Yeah, I'm Nick Martinbell. Um, I'm gonna be a homeowner up there in Francis, Gates of Francis, about a couple lots up there. And, uh, what I liked when I built my house over here in Wild Willow, it kept the neighborhood really clean. It keeps people from leaving their trailers and their razors and all that stuff apart from the side of their homes. Um, and Wild Willow sort of really put a impact on that. It makes it really nice neighborhood to be able to have it all undercover. And a lot of people do travel from, sit their second homes and they travel from California and different areas where they can put their motorhome undercover and all their trailers to be able to get out of sight of people and make it look like a nice clean neighborhood, so. Helps a lot.
Thank you.
All right. Let's just read through some of this, um. So. As I read your email, um. So like on your half acre lots, it's twelve thousand five hundred. That's what's currently approved, is that the same going down through the top line as what's currently approved?
No, it's, twelve thousand five hundred is approved a whole lot.
Oh, that's what is approved, period, I see, okay.
Oh, a whole lot.
And then this is your proposed. So you're asking for fifteen thousand on a half acre.
Including retention, like retaining walls for driveways and.
Right.
Developmental shows on the lots.
Mm-hmm. All right. Any discussion, questions, concerns from council?
Um, question I have is, you know, I wasn't here when this all went down, but, you know, what was the main? It sounds like the, the wildlife concern was the, the main reason we did this, right? What's changed since then?
We did that half acre, uh, when the new one came in, we had to buy an additional hundred and twenty acres above us, um, for the wildlife preservation. And we did the twenty acres within the development that was required.
Yeah, that was required as part of the initial subdivision. So when the subdivision approved, that hundred twenty acres was approved, that was already part of the first subdivision, yeah. Okay, so, I mean, so what, has something changed with the migration? Since then to make that, so we would, we come from making a change with the amount of wildlife up there?
I mean, there's not much macro up there. Like I said, it's a lot of small game up there. You got rabbits, snails, eagles. It, on, on the, uh, current map, it doesn't show that it is in the wildlife report, doesn't show that it's a high area for migration for macro game.
I, I live right there, I'm the corner lot. I know it's like redneck, I'm kind of a redneck. Any night, any given night, there's mule deer and there's elk up on that hill. There has been for the past thirty-two years that I've lived there. I don't know where this study's coming from that says it's not, but it is.
Well, you'll see, uh, there's two videos attached from just recently too.
Do you want me to show those or? You know, I was tucking my kid into bed last week and I counted fifty, he had a deer.
Yeah, it's, it's there.
Just on that hill right there.
There.
Yeah, yeah.
Lot of them, there's elk and.
Yeah, there's all kinds of.
There's cougars, there's, I can open my back windows, I love to hear the calling of them, but.
The initial report, when this was first set up, that, they said there was a migration path for critical.
Well, it's winter, winter age.
Winter, winter age, not, not necessarily migration, but, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Yes.
But I, like, I'm with Sean, I live on foothill too, and my backyard, I, I have deer in my back pasture every night that come down off of those hills.
Yeah, they're certainly gaining to them.
Two thousand six.
Yeah, nineteen years ago.
Yeah, nineteen years, so.
And. I don't know if there's change up there.
I think if anything, it's made it more critical. Saw that a couple years ago with that big, hard winter.
Um, Scott, can you?
What happened?
Can you speak to, cause I don't think any of us were part of this original decision. Um. Can you speak to how that square footage of area of disturbance was um, determined, like how did we come up with that number?
I really think that's just what, um, through the discussions, the, the developer proposed that to us. I don't know that there was a whole lot of, um. I think, you know, we, they just came and the developer said, yeah, I'd be comfortable doing a twelve thousand five hundred square foot.
So, can you?
Area of disturbance, not.
I'm gonna sound really stupid right now. So, can you tell me how much twelve thousand five hundred square foot is off of the half acre?
Yeah.
Like. Yeah, although where I live, would it be my field? Would it be where my house is in the yard or, I mean, what it in flavor turns to be?
Fifty-seven percent, fifty-seven percent of the lot.
So just over half, okay, okay.
It's, yeah, and it's point two eight acres.
Point two eight out of that.
So out of the half acres, they can disturb it just over half.
Just over half of it, okay.
To one hour.
All right, I'm just trying to.
And then as the lots get bigger, it's less percentage.
Oh.
Right, right.
Kind of like normal.
Oh, so that right there.
I think she's just trying to get a.
This is what.
Give my mind a picture of it.
So this is what everything has to be right now.
Mm-hmm.
Unless.
Yeah, and they want to.
But they want to change it to these on these size lots.
And then like a ten acre, I'd like to put a riding arena on it.
Say that again.
On the ten acre lot, I want to put a riding arena on it.
Oh, I see.
I think the main goal is just getting enough AOD to, you know, get a, um, AOD unit or detached garage, as mentioned with, you know, uh, razors and toys and RVs. Um, I think it's kind of the big, big deal there, and then obviously on that ten acre, like you said, possibly a higher caliber buyer that may wanna, you know, larger barn or, or arena on that. Uh, this twelve thousand five hundred does kind of, I mean, we have a few houses built up there. Um, the one that we have designed, it's, you know, it's about a five thousand square foot house, so it is a larger house, but it does minimize the landscape. So we actually wanted a little bit bigger of a landscape to have like a fire pit and whatnot, but they did have to limit that, so does require them to either limit their home or, you know, have a bigger landscape. As the builder, my biggest thing is the ADU kind of following the, the appetite to come to Francis versus some of the surrounding areas, so. Um, that's kind of the big, big idea on my side with being a builder.
It sounds like another portion of this was to, to decrease the, the view of the homes on there, right? You know, a, a riding arena's a lot more palatable than a big garage with razors in it, right? Um, can we have? Is this something case by case we can decide on instead of just blanket change it?
I mean, I guess they could request it per lot, like they could come in for, and request it per lot. I think you start getting into some sticky situations though, if you start approving it for this and not for that. I mean, the only other thing I could think that you could do is you could, you could say we, we, we would allow a larger area of disturbance for X, Y, and Z, but that would open it up to the whole place. So you could say, you know, we would allow an area, the area of disturbance could be increased for things like arenas and, I, I don't know how you would ever word that to cover it, but I suppose you could maybe do that, but I don't know if you could really do it on a lot by lot basis.
Yeah.
No, I, I would.
Well, that, that would, that would mean every building permit would have come to the city council for.
And we don't do that. We don't do it.
We, we used to do that.
Um, so that was my question, so just tell me again, I, I was looking for it, but I didn't s- see it right off, so maybe you can just explain. The, uh, the area of disturbance does include the driveway and retention or does not?
Not the driveway.
I. I read attention.
I believe, yeah.
Yeah, there's retention.
So includes retention, but not the driveway?
Retention, landscape building.
That's what I, yeah, I couldn't, I, I couldn't remember that, I thought I heard there was an exclusion, I wasn't sure what it was, thank you. So. I think for me personally, um. I, I like that that development. One, I don't, I don't like that it's there, you know, none of us had those decisions, but I think it can be a nice place. Be- because it's there, I think it can turn into something nice. But I like the idea, and I like what they did in that they preserved a bunch of that space that isn't filled with buildings, uh, you know, for the deer and elk and because it is, as, as we all know, critical winter range and not, uh. I could, I could possibly wrap my mind around increasing that building envelope of that area of disturbance for things like arenas. Or, you know, I, I don't know how you word that. Um, outdoor, something, I, I don't know, but, but I, I'd have some pretty serious reservations of increasing it for any and all building person.
Well, I kind of have the same thoughts, I mean. Last three years, we've been fighting the clone to have as much open space as possible with every great decision we're making, and then we actually had an agreement that created a lot of that. So for me to go and go, okay, well, let's go ahead and decrease that, that, like, I don't, that doesn't appeal. I understand the petition, the reasoning for it, I just don't see.
So, I guess, if you're kind of on Jeremy lines, thinking if, um, if you wanted to do something like that, um, the majority of the lots are under an acre. There's a few that are one point three, you know, a little bit over, but there is the one ten acre lot, and then there's a four acre lot. Um, so if you wanted to do something and said, you know, anything over one and a half acres or one acre or whatever, we're willing to, to give some more um, area disturbance for that, and then that way it would limit the, the smaller lots. Um, just kind of stay the same or, you know, whatever you want to do, but I think you could, if you want to do something for like the bigger lots, then that would be a thought, so. And that way you wouldn't, we wouldn't have to deal with every single lot coming in on a case by case basis type thing.
Yeah, I understand that, it's still, still giving it up though, it's my issue.
Oh, yeah. Is it currently is? That one plus acre lot? That same for like the ten thousand or the ten acre lot?
Yeah.
So fifty-five percent coverage of that, or is it fifty-seven percent of the one acre lot?
No, no, no.
It's the twelve thousand five hundred square.
It's still that of.
Yeah.
Everything right now.
Okay, all the ones that are there are suggestions.
Yeah, that's just the recommended kind of as it goes up, and then as you see the percentage. I don't know if on that one, it'll stay the same, but it's.
Would that be a way of these zoning? And making lots bigger? Uh, maybe taking the lower section and turning it to a, a question mark?
I mean, you can always petition for a rezone, but I, 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 I would say without speaking for everyone, a rezone right now is gonna not be super palatable.
Well, a rezone to bigger lots?
A rezone to bigger lots?
Well, they wouldn't, you, I guess you wouldn't have to rezone to bigger lots, cause as long as the lots meet the minimum acreage, if you wanted to take two of these lots and put it into, um, one lot. Um, but that's still.
That'd be a lot line adjustment more than.
Yeah, but it would still, the way that this reads, it'd be still twelve thousand five hundred per lot.
Right. So you just make it, yeah, I don't know.
Like a greater stipulation on a twenty-fourth there?
Yeah, that. But that ten acre lot, it's point three, it's three percent coverage?
Well, let's just.
Right now?
Well, let's just think about this, so. If you're, let's, let's just say it's for an arena. I mean, I don't know how big of an arena, but like, mine's one sixty by two hundred, so. I mean, that's thirty-two thousand square feet, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, that's triple. Just for the arena.
No, that's the arena, and that doesn't include how we get there and all that kind of stuff, disturbing.
Right. All right.
I just have a question, I have not looked at this map to extensive, I know there's two homes being built there now. You said one of them's five thousand square feet. Are they on a half acre lot?
Those ones, one hundred and three quarters.
One point seven two.
Yeah, two acres.
What lots are they on?
About fourteen and about, uh, twenty.
So fourteen is point seven two acres and twenty is point eight acres.
They're side by side up there. Yeah, yeah.
Are those lots right there?
Yeah. All right, any other discussion, questions, concerns?
Well, actually, it's point five acres, sorry, I said point eight, but it's point five.
If not, we'll take a motion.
Well, my, my thought is, and I totally get, you probably saw me for fifteen minutes here and know that I'm a cowgirl, I love arenas and I love all that. But the developer or whoever it was bought this knowing what it was, so. And they did it back in two thousand six for a reason, it was a great reason, we need to keep it open. And so my opinion is just leave it as is.
Will you deal with the car driver and everything like for the houses and all that stuff?
What's up, my, my trailer, I put my houses. My house is probably gonna bring down the, the cost of your houses.
You're no value.
You probably won't sell houses, cause mine's there, so.
You can put up a sign like the neighbor used to have.
Well, I won't go that far, I'm not that bad, but.
All right, I'll, uh, I'll take a motion if, if there's no further discussion.
I'll make a motion to deny the petition on foothills at Francis Gate area of disturbance.
Is there a second?
I'll second. I'll second.
Clint can second it.
Okay, Clint's second, Clint?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Mayor's aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thanks, guys, sorry. Okay. Suzanne, do you want to do budget or free, fee and rate ordinance first?
Whatever you want to do.
What's the worst one?
What's next in line, let's switch it up.
Budget, save the best for last.
Okay. Fee and rate ordinance. Did anything?
That's the discussion we talked about.
Yeah, did anything change?
Did you have anything in the, do you have something on here?
Yeah, I have a warrant on me.
I s- I see it, it's on mine too.
Scott? Get out of the Francis at whatever.
Come on, engineer planner.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not.
Did you get all the way out of where the Francis gate is? No, we have, with this, cause I have all of your stuff in here like a week ago.
Yeah, he was.
And Katie had all her stuff in there, but it wasn't in there together. I did notice that something to me and I said, my stuff's been in it forever.
Yeah, it's, it, I don't.
And it was, it was all messed up.
Unless, just a, just a second, if it, cause it might be a Word document and that doesn't read it, so, yeah, there it is right there.
There it is, it is.
That's the problem.
Remind me which section this is that changed.
Twenty-two point five, I have it highlighted in yellow. Let's see, two oh two five thirty.
So. One, I can, we can go through this, the, the changes are here in her head.
Two point five point one, unauthorized water connection.
So we changed the application fee from twenty-five to fifty?
We did penalty for violation for connecting to, connecting or tampering with the Francis City water without approval, five hundred dollar first violation, thousand.
So, I'm just going.
The fourth violation, two thousand, and after that it was five point.
But do we want to change this application fee here that you got proposed, right?
I don't know, we'll discuss that with you.
Which one's that?
One point one, one point three. It's the application fee. It's the application fee.
Yeah, I didn't do anything with the application.
So, fifty dollars?
The only thing that was discussed with me was, uh. Do we have a lot of people doing that, Ivory Homes? What's up, though?
They connected without.
A lot.
So what it is, is construction water.
So this is where you're at here and stuff, but.
Two point five point.
So that, first, let's do the fire hydrant fee.
Do what?
The fire hydrant.
Where's that?
So this is for the fire hydrant meter rental, we increased it.
Page three.
We already did that in week.
I don't know, it's in red, so.
It goes, there's a lot of red.
It's just, it's taking out an extra space is all it's doing.
Corrections we've already made.
I, I thought we talked about the fire before.
Yeah, everything in red is correction.
All right, so let's go to.
So the ordinance I'm looking at has a fifty dollar application fee on it, Scott.
He's on page two.
Page two?
Back to the very first one, the twenty-five to fifty.
Well, it's al- it's already been made.
Oh, that one's.
Oh, it's already been made?
Yeah, so I think the only changes that we're talking about are the unauthorized water connection.
Water connection fees are here.
Okay.
And so what's happening is they're, they're hooking onto the water. And there's really no avenue for us to penalize that, um, and so.
We can't, we can't physically go out and disconnect it.
Well, we do, but then they, but then they just do it again.
They just go back and reconnect.
And that's why we've now structured this the way we have, so it used to be, um. Do you remember what it was? Has that got the changes? I can't see it, so.
No, it just says five hundred for the, we didn't have this, this is.
We didn't have it at all, that's right, we didn't have it at all, so what we did is we, we kind of compared with, uh, surrounding cities canvas, um, and others, and so. The idea is to discourage this type of crap, right? So, first violation, we find you hooking up to the water, uh, without. Authorizations, five hundred, and then it just doubles, you know, adds five hundred every.
I'd make it more the first time and the max every other time after.
Me too. Can you tell that's why they made it double after the fourth one, I didn't.
I wouldn't even have a two, three, or four.
I, I wouldn't give them this mu- who, who do we send the fine to, Ivory Homes or the contractor?
Whoever's the building permit.
Whoever the building permit is, yeah. And so.
When they turn it off, can they put a lock on it?
Yeah, well, we do.
Only if there's a meter either.
Do they cut it off or something, how do they?
Yeah.
I mean, I called, I called Jeremy.
We can.
We can?
Well, you can put a stop work order.
That's, yeah, that, these fines are gonna be nothing to these developers. That five hundred dollars is nothing.
Yeah, that's what it takes.
You, you, I could tell them one time, you do it once, you're stealing our water, you do it a second time, we're gonna cancel your building permit or give you a cease and desist.
How clear is it to not do this, I mean, don't we have to? Say, I'm gonna make a bad choice, I'm gonna do this the first time, and so make that happen, I mean, I'm gonna.
Ask for forgiveness than ask for permission.
So we know they're stealing the water.
Didn't we change it that we, once we set the building permit, it's, or the water meter, it's not construction water, they were gonna start building them?
That's what I thought, cause didn't we discuss about putting the meter in right away?
But that's, yeah, we're gonna, yeah.
So they're, they're stealing this water unbeaten.
So what it is, is it's construction water, it's like, the subs come in and they're doing this or doing the app, whatever, they're, they're hooking to it to, to do their work, right? There's a way to do that and do it properly, so what happens is, as you can imagine, well, we don't know what's the subs, well, you're still responsible.
Absolutely.
The developer, whoever's project it is, is responsible for their sub, so. That's their problem, one way or the other.
Well, I'd wanna bring the hammer out of this thing. Four, four of these five chances, and they're still doing it, they're, they're gonna keep doing it. And, and I've seen this happen in California, the developer contractor did the exact same thing, they got caught stealing the water one time. They were off that project.
Yeah, if they're doing this.
Sixteen minutes shut them down, they did not give them a second chance.
If there's some way we can do that, that's my vote.
Well, give them a cease and desist.
Well, I think, yeah, I think you can give them, put a stop work order.
Yeah, a stop work order, the, the, Ivory Homes would cer- certainly get onto their subcontractors then.
It sounds like they are, isn't it?
What's up?
They get on them already.
Yeah, they say they.
The lady that brings in, I heard her talk about.
Well, then maybe they should give them.
Kick them off the job.
They just don't.
You kick your sub off.
Yeah.
Damn right, you can.
Yeah, generals can kick the sub off, I've been a subcontractor for thirty-five years and I, I live under that threat that if I goof up. I can be kicked off that job somewhere. They can, they just don't want to.
Now they can't find other subs, so.
That's probably what.
Well, then that's on them, they're gonna.
Exactly, it's their problem.
They're gonna make that one sub, then toe the line.
Not, yeah, none of this is our problem.
No, I agree, but I think when I first read this the other day, couple of days ago, I thought, no, this is, we're giving them way too much leeway.
Yeah, I like the. Thousand on the first one and then.
We can make it worse, it don't.
There's a lot that they can't control, like, one time you can't control, like, okay, I didn't, I had, I didn't have proper oversight on this, this hit me.
Hit them with the five on the first one.
And then, and then if they do it again, then it's a.
And I, and the, the hard part is, is sometimes you gotta think about, okay, Clint, you pull a building permit, your sub comes and does it. It's gonna hurt you a lot more than it's gonna hurt Ivory Homes, so if we, our, our goal is to hit the big developers. But we also gotta think about what happens to a resident.
No, I, I agree, that's why, you know, that's why it's like, pull the permit the first time they do it, no, cause you can't control everything, you should try to. And so make it hefty the first time, and then, the force of them to be more due diligence and the one to watch and control that, and then.
I mean, I could, I could be comfortable with the, with the five hundred or a thousand on the first one, and then the second one is just a stop work order.
I, that's why I was just, hit them with a thousand.
But what do, what do they do to get, what do they have to pay to get their, to get the stop work order? So they can start working again, cause they're not, we can't say, hey, you can't build a house.
Right, you gotta, it's gotta be a fine.
Stop work order, we gotta say, yeah, you gotta play this, um, fine, violation two, so.
A thousand and five thousand?
Yeah, stop work order and a.
Five thousand dollar violation, and not have fourth, fifth.
If, they need to read this, and they need to know upfront, that Ivory Homes need to tell their sub, this is what's gonna happen. Now, Ivory Homes can turn and say, look, if you, if we get nailed for this thousand dollars, you're paying it.
Right.
Ivory Homes is it, you know, they can put that in their contract.
Well, I mean, that's exactly what I would do if I had a sub that got me.
Oh, I would put it on the subs, oh, absolutely. And then say, look, if you, if it happens a second time, you get a stop order, it takes five thousand dollars, get that lifted.
I'm good with that.
But I, I think we need to be more stringent.
More aggressive, more aggressive.
Don't ask me, I wanna be meaner than that, so.
I think we gotta be reasonable.
Me too, but y'all know how I feel about Ivory.
Scott, you have a very valid point, I never in my mind thought about, you know, the homeowner.
The homeowner.
I, Ivory Homes?
Yeah, it's, it's.
That's all I saw, they're just big developers and they don't care.
But that's, that's, that's the main people we have a problem with, so it's.
Yeah.
But we do need to think about that.
So no, that was very, very.
Cover everybody, it's not just. Okay, so what do we wanna do, a thousand for the first violation and then a second violation is a stop work order and five thousand bucks?
To lift, to get the stop order lifted, yes, I'm.
Well, that's how you get.
Then that, and again, that's per project, not per building, right?
That's per.
No, I say per house.
That's per violation, so.
Every time.
Saying they don't get to do it every, for every house, oh, we did that on this house, then we did that on this house, then we did that on this house.
Oh, yeah, like we talked about a couple months ago.
Or is it like they're all together and you go, okay, you get one shot for your whole development, there's your thousand, and every other time, I don't care if it's this lot or that lot.
You cease and desist the whole project?
It's, it's five every time after that, or is it per lot?
That's a, that's a good question.
Because what if they just come and go, oh, well, that was for that lot over there, not the one you hit us on last week?
Right.
Well, I think that aligns with the, I think it was the trash stuff, we said that it's for the project, not just the one we made it, so I think we should align it with that. You know, it's.
Well, that, I mean, I'd make it for the project, like, for the entire developer, can you tie it to the developer? I don't know.
I, I, I think legally you could.
Cause the prob- I guess the problem is, is if, say, it's a, a development that's, um. The developer is building a few houses and then you get, he sells a lot and some other, you know, one of these guys comes in to build a house. Um, if these guys do it and they get hit the first time, then that punishes this other developer that.
Right, it's pretty much gonna have to be tied to the law.
So.
But that's something.
To what's that, to the lot owner?
Well, it, it would be, it would be tied to the building permit, that's the only, cause you can't, you can't stop work, the, unless they're violating. The whole project, you could only stop that.
Cause, yeah, we could just do that building, I don't think you could put stop work orders on every building permit.
So, so if there's a hundred home development, they've got a hundred chances to get a thousand dollar fine.
Well, that's a hundred grand.
Well, I understand, plus five, five grand, get it back.
Second time.
Second time.
I mean, I don't. I, don't, don't read too much into it, I don't think it's that widespread.
I understand.
Does that make sense? Like, I, I don't think it's happening on every lot.
Right.
It's happening, it's a problem, but I don't think it's like.
Well, like Sam's, right, but like Sam was saying, I wanna make it hurt enough that even people like Ivory think about it. And they don't just come and go like, well, we tried to tell them to stop and they just won't, and what do you want us to do about it? Because it's the same thing, I've been in construction too, and my boss told me, if you do this, we're off the job and you're fired.
Exactly.
And they cared enough about it, cause it hurt if they got kicked off the job. So even with these multi-hundred million dollar developers, I want them to at least think about it and not just say, well, we can't do anything about it, we told them. I want it to be like, hey, we're having our pre-construction meeting or whatever, you will not do this on this project. And I don't know how to do that.
I guess, do we wanna, I don't know. Get some legal input on how, how we could do it to, cause I, I can kinda see. If the, I get, the hard part would be is if you had somebody that come in and do a couple lots, but you don't do it. Then you're not gonna get hit, but, you know, if you happen to do it once.
I just don't wanna do loopholes.
Cause this, cause this guy got five hundred, you know, the first time, and this is our first offense, and we're gonna get hit with five thousand? I, I don't know, I.
I, I'm not sympathetic.
No, I'm not.
Well, no, like I said, you put the verbiage in, you get caught once, it's a thousand dollar fine, you get caught a second time. You get a stop, stop.
Right, but the problem is, is, problem is, is you could have. You could have a project, let's say Stuart Ranches, as an example. That one contractor. The, the, the lots, the project is built, the lots are now sold.
Sure.
So you can't stop the project. All you'd be able to do is hit that lot.
Well, I like your idea, tie it to the, uh, uh, building permit.
You can only tie it to the building permit, that's what I'm saying, is, is it makes it difficult if you have. If you have multiple contractors or multiple generals in, in the same project or in the same development. Right, because if one, if one violates, that can't punish the, the other.
That's fair, and I, I think that's.
I, I think that's fair, but.
Every home.
I think it should fix it.
Is every home in Ivory's development over here, they have, there's, it's a separate building permit per unit?
Yes.
That I agree with. That whoever.
But, I can think what Clayton's trying to say is if they do, they have one violation on this house, but over on this house, they have another violation. Then we're back to square, you know, this is your first violation over here, but it's the same builder, I think that's what Clayton's trying to say, Clayton's trying to say. You did it over here, you know better, so this is a second violation here.
It's kinda like, oh, we got ten chances at this, we just say, well, that was for that house, well, this time it was for that house.
And it would, and it would be, because it has to be.
I, I think it might be good if we could, like, do some research and see if we can tie it to the builder, rather than the permit plus the builder and say.
Or to the contractor, you could tie it to the contractor.
The sub, but, yeah, I think it might be kinda harder to get the money out of the sub.
For sure.
Than trying to get it out of the, the building, the guy with the permit.
Uh, yeah, we probably need to, we probably don't wanna pass this, we probably wanna think about it, figure out how to best do it.
Cause I, I agree, I, I agree with Clint completely.
Well, he's got great points.
They're, they're gonna say, I got a first chance on every single one of these, and, but then, you know, they should know better, so.
Well, if you get caught filling up a five hundred gallon tank in the back of your truck, well, uh, that's for that house, not really where I'm gonna take it, I'll just tell you I'm going somewhere else. But I don't.
Yeah, maybe we should ask if we could get a first chance. For, let's say, Clayton is the subcontractor, whoever turns it on, he gets one chance. I don't care how many houses he's building, you know, or whatever, so I'm on that same page, and then if I'm building a house, I get one chance too, so each. Contractor or whatever gets the one chance, instead of each house, each lot gets the chance.
Well, the only time it really becomes a problem is in the developments, like, like a Fieldstone or an Ivory or somebody that's building all that, that's, that's. They're the developer and they're the builder.
Well.
On projects that are to the developer and you have somebody else, they sell the project and whatever, or they sell just the lots, but they're not. They're not pulling.
But they're not the ones building, building.
His, his Francis Gate is not, they're, they're not building all the houses, these guys have a few lots.
Right.
Some other guys have a few lots, so that's different, you know, Stuart Ranch is mainly one builder. Francis Commons is one builder, our ranch is one builder, you know, Circle T is gonna be a couple builders, but.
I think that we'd have to find a way to tie it to a contractor. If you tie it to the contractor and the lot, cause what if they just sell the, to a different contractor and then they do it and they sell to a different one and then they do it?
There are, I would see, let's, let's, those windows.
Right, so it's, there's lots of loopholes, so like you guys said, I would recommend maybe we have a legal look at it.
Yeah, I think we need to, you know, and also, I, I, I mean, I don't think. It's like Clayton says, I mean, there are a lot of different avenues, I don't, you know, it's not like it's. It's not that precious that they're, that they're taking every avenue possible, but it is a problem in some of the developments, so. There's gotta be a way to, to make it stick and make it tied so that. What he's saying doesn't happen where they get a hundred first chances. I mean, it does cost them a hundred grand, which is pretty significant over time, but maybe it's not.
Oh, and you're selling a hundred lots.
Right, doesn't matter. It's like a hundred bucks, no?
That's a quarter of that home that I just sold.
You get hit with that thousand dollar fine, so the house price is probably gonna go up a thousand dollars.
Yeah, it's gonna twiddle down to the.
It's, it's gonna.
Right.
Well, I'm glad this isn't like a giant problem, like you're saying, but.
I think, I think one thing we add, look at adding too is, um, cause this is more just the. We gotta spell out like fire hydrants too, cause if they, somebody connects to a fire hydrant. Um, then they get hit, cause I've had that happen at other communities where somebody goes and connects to the fire hydrant to fill up a five hundred dollar water buffalo and. They just go around town, try and hide, and they get caught, so. I think that, I don't, I don't, I guess tampering with Francis City water, this, this probably would work, but I think we had to include fire hydrants too, just. Make sure we.
In any capacity, maybe Francis City water, any, yeah, that's a.
Yeah, the only, the only problem with that is with fire hydrants, we can't put a stop work order on their second offense, because. Unless, you know, unless they got a building permit, so I don't know how we.
All right.
So, just take a motion to table this?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion that we table this fee and rate ordinance twenty twenty-five dash oh two. Until legal can.
We get some new options.
Second.
Aye.
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 All right. That was easy.
Are you signing with him, Clayton?
Yep.
Clayton is, super second.
Number two, ring man today.
Are we willing to skip to now?
Oh, I don't know, I think we're done. We may talk about the budget.
Budget.
Okay, real quick, we're gonna skip to, uh. Mayor reports and then Lindy can leave.
You know what, I think I just wanna join you guys, you were the most fun.
Now I know you're full.
You're the seat, come on.
There's an empty seat, hon.
I'd be a heck of a lot of help, but it was a lot of fun.
So.
That's the first time we've ever heard that.
No, no.
That's right.
Mayor's report.
Mayor report. So this isn't something we can take any action on today, but, um, I don't know if you've heard. There's a new association in town. Called the Camus Valley Preservation Association?
Yes.
Lindy is one of their representatives, at least tonight. So they approached Camas and they've approached, uh, approached me with a possible, well, with a request to adopt a possible resolution. Basically saying that we support their efforts. And their efforts are, well, maybe you should speak to this real quick. Just real brief, tell us what your efforts are.
Our, our efforts are to work with the city and preserving as much as we can for, or what the integrity is of the valley. It's not that, not to scare people around, it's to help be a source of communication, source of, you know, if we hear stuff, we can come through and do. Um, our first barrier that we're trying to stop would be the West Hill, some of those that has come about. And that's just the first, that's not the only thing we're doing. That was the first thing that how we create our group and how we, we kind of. A very professional and very compassionate group of people. It's amazing. So that's really where we are. I am not the universal, so if we're, if we like, if, if we were honored to be able to present to you, let's let that flow that way. I'm just one superior to things, we're real, yeah. It's amazing what's going on.
And so, and so basically they've just requested that we at least consider this resolution. I'm not sure how, um, you know, how we do this without it creating. Not that we can't do it, but that we need to be careful in how we do it so that it doesn't appear as, you know, Francis City taking a specific stand against, say, West Hill City, even if we're not in support of that, um, individually. It, it can be problematic for the city to take an official stance on that, so. Long story short, they talked to me about this, um, Camas has adopted this, um, resolution. And basically just, you know, say, again, saying that they support, um, the Camas Valley Preservation Association. We're not ready to adopt that today, um, but I guess for purposes of this discussion, is it something that you're interested in looking at? Is it something that you want to see on the next agenda for possible approval? And if so, then we can move forward that way. We can get it looked at with legal and things like that. Just real quick, one of my concerns is, uh, while I agree personally with a lot of these things, I wanna be careful. The city taking a specific stance, and I know a lot of the people involved and I trust them. My concern would be the city throwing their support behind the group that may change and that we may no longer support at some future date. Make sense?
Yeah.
So, not that we couldn't rescind that resolution or whatever, um, but things to think about. And, and I know that their intention would never be to, to put us in that position, but things change. You never know.
Would this, this be us saying fully support or hey, we wanna be a participant? We have a, a representative?
I, I would, I would, as Jeremy to Jeremy, uh, it's more supporting us and that we look at what that incorporation proposes for the valley is going to impact all of us.
Right.
That, that's really our first, that, that, the, the resolution is for that. After that, we'd love to help the valley. But we're not to be interfering with what you're doing at all. We're here to help communicate and maybe say, this is going on and let people know. Even if we're at, at stateside, letting people know, being an advocate for the valley.
Yeah, it certainly wouldn't be something that we would be involved in. It would basically be saying, we support their efforts.
I'm interested in seeing it.
Is it something, has legal looked at this?
I've sent it to him and we've briefly discussed it, but we didn't have time to have it ready for tonight's meeting.
Got it.
So, um, with the other stuff going on, so. All right. Is that kind of the sentiment for everybody? Everybody wanna see it and kinda make a decision later?
Yes, I'm, I'm very interested in seeing it.
All right. I'll, I'll talk with Brad. We'll get it worked out and we'll, uh, put it on the agenda for next month. Okay. Now.
Hold it. Can I have a table at my, at the, uh, area?
Yeah.
Oh, absolutely, yes. I'll have the food there.
It's gonna cost you a lot, so.
Oh, you don't know what you just said. You don't know what you just said.
No, 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 for. Okay, guys, hey, nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You are a little fun. You got me out of cooking.
There you go. Okay, now we can go to, uh.
Suzanne.
What is it for me?
Lindy Sternlight.
L Y N D Y?
I think it's L Y N D I.
L Y N D I, Sternlight? Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, budget. In terms of money, there is no money.
Nothing's changed since we sat down last week.
Well, then we don't need to have a discussion.
Yes, you do. You need to review and look over your operational budget, see what percentage you should.
I'm sorry, so, word.
So, correct spelling for her name is L I N D Y. You were right.
Okay.
M S T E O N, L G H T?
Yeah.
Remember, you should be looking over the operational budget in each meeting so you can basically where you're at. So you probably need to start figuring out.
Is that where you want to start? Do you want, where do you wanna go? Where do you want me to show the screen?
Yeah, start with the operational budget.
This year's or next year's?
No, you haven't next year's yet, cause we haven't spent any from the last year yet.
Oh, sorry.
So this is the financial report.
We're talking about the operations, yeah. Okay.
This one's for the general budget. So that far, the side by side percent used, you can see what the percentages that we've used so far.
And this is revenue here.
Yeah, you're looking at revenues.
The revenue's on the top, expenses on the bottom.
Expenditures, anything that's under, where's the, uh, so ninety-one point six seven percent of the fiscal year has, um, expired, so anything that's under ninety-one percent is on track. Ninety-one percent or below is on track. Although some of these are gonna change now with the coffee machine and the side by side. Some of those will be taken out of different, um, different areas, like, uh, the side by side will probably be taken from.
So I formally amended the budget. There are certain areas within the budget that have a lot more money than the budget had for.
Right.
So those monies were moved to places where we needed things.
To make everything balance.
Right. That's why, cause the amended budget, because we changed.
Right. So, most things are on track, um. You'll see a few things that are a little over, um, and what it really comes down to is each line should balance, but if, if you have one line that's way over and one line that's way under, you can amend the budget, move that money around, make everything balanced to zero.
As long as, as long as everything under your total revenue matches your total expense.
Then you're good.
And the general budget, we're good.
And you can only carry over twenty-five percent? So the city's not in the business of being flush all the time, yeah.
But the general, the general fund is the only fund that you have to be zero balance. The enterprise funds.
The enterprise funds, like the water sewer, things like that, right?
Those are days.
Right. Overall, everything looks pretty darn good. There's nothing really out of whack. If there was, um, then it gets adjusted so that.
And that's what we're gonna be doing before we're in this fiscal year and then the next fiscal year.
Right.
Because we have money to do it, plus the front tariffs, because that's all we have to do.
Yeah. So, is there anything that you can think of right off that we need to address, Suzanne, in the operational budget as far as something that's out of whack that we need to talk about why it's that way? I don't see anything.
No, because when, when we sat down the other day, we got that all fixed.
Right. Okay.
Other accounts, we find a couple things from you guys, if you're aware.
All right, so go to, should we go then to?
Well, then after this one, if you go to your amended budgets, it just shows you a what you're getting, the percentage, it just shows you the actual overall budget. I think the evaluation.
All right, we wanna go to the.
The tentative is the one we're.
The tentative, that's what we need to.
Trying to figure out what we're gonna do.
Well, that's what we need to look at.
There are ten.
And for the tentative next year, we did, uh, the streets fund, cause right now we just have streets, P and C and everything comes out of there. Camas is serving, use some money for the, for P and C stuff.
Right.
So.
Try to be able to track the P and C lots.
Mm-hmm. And you want money budgeted in there, so.
Separate from everything. All right. So the tentative budget, you got that up, Scott?
Is that amended or the other one?
It'll be, it'll be highlighted in yellow.
It's in yellow.
And it'll say tentative on the top.
Okay. Same file, just the way down.
So if you look under the streets, you should see that, that the streets weren't added, right? I think it's two below the streets, P and C.
Um.
Street, oh, true.
And I haven't done anything yet, but I think in the frontier days fund, if we're gonna do the veterans, no more anything, we should probably still have a general ledger account and budget. Not wait till.
You mean the Reese Cross American thing?
No, no.
No.
Plot for the veterans.
Oh, plot for the veterans.
Yeah, the plot.
Got it.
That's been due, we should probably add a, a line item.
Do you think we need a line item for that?
Right now, I think it's just more than miscellaneous. It'd be nice if we got a line item so you can see the exact expense. We don't really have revenue from it, but expense wise, you can see exactly what the expense were just that.
Right, yeah, I mean, that, either way, I guess is fine.
It's up to you guys. But you do have, you do have money.
Well, whatever you think is easiest as far as accounting, I think that's where it really needs to come down to. So, in the tentative budget though, if you look at, let's just go down through the whole thing. So from the start, um, you're looking at the revenues, so all of this is kind of just a guess, right? So as you can see, things, things have increased.
So when I look at, I look at the last three years and kinda see where we've been each year.
And that's based on all of our revenue streams. There's, you know, a number of those. They're all listed here, but, but really, you, you start to look at, you know, what did we do last year? Is that, is that line potentially going to increase or decrease this year based on what, what's going on and those types of things? So everything on the revenue side is, well, on both sides is a, is an absolute estimate. You're just going, well, we think this is about what we're gonna make based on property taxes and all of these things, so.
Yeah.
You'll see that, like, building permit applications, um, last year we estimated four seventy-five, this year we're estimating four sixty-five, so we're, we're estimating a ten thousand dollar decrease. And that may or may not be realized, but how, how we typically do this, or Suzanne typically does this, and my advice has always been, underestimate the revenues, overestimate the expenditures, so that we end up somewhere in the middle.
On the, the building permits, do we take into effect, account that new law that if somebody, um, if, like over in the Francis Commons, if they're building the same house, it's the same, um, set of plans, just on a different lot, we can only charge them, what, a third? Of the, if, if, a third of the building permit, if it's a second or third or fourth?
Oh, yeah, I forgot about that.
So it decreases, so that we may wanna.
So, what I. That's state law?
Yeah.
What I do.
State legislature's looking out for us.
What do you think, what do you think from my developer?
Yeah, I can see, well, that makes no sense to us.
So on building permits, I'm trying to figure out how many permits we may have, so like I want to, can you see how many I think we have last year?
Right.
We had sixty-something, so this year I've only budgeted like forty. And I tried to, if you have forty permits in average, what they've been, that's the revenue. And then when you're doing your water impact, your sewer impact, those are all the expenses.
Based on that.
All of those are based on the forty.
Right. Okay. We have added.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, I, I'm looking around the area and thinking, you think we're only gonna get forty people to wanna build this next year? Building permit wise?
Hopefully, we have a hun, well, money wise, hopefully we have a hundred and forty. We don't really want a hundred and forty new homes.
No, I understand that, but.
But if we only estimate at forty and we only think we're gonna get four hundred and sixty-five thousand, and we, then we budget within that, we're good. But if we estimate that we're gonna get seventy and we only get forty, then we're screwed.
Okay. Understood.
You know what I mean?
Yep.
So I, my advice is always way overestimate the.
Costs.
Underestimate the, uh, revenues and way overestimate the expenditures. That way, we come out okay on, you know, when it all comes out in the wash, cause everything is an estimate.
Yep.
And you'll see, we've, we've added, um, in, in, like, line thirty-three, forty-eight, the, the grants. We've added lines for each of these different grants so that we can track them more effectively, and we don't know what any of those will be yet, so we'll add those.
Did I put any amount in the wrap one yet?
So the wrap has sixty.
Yeah, sixty.
We applied for four hundred.
And the rest from tax, tax grant has zero in it, but we'll, we'll probably end up with some of that too. We just don't know how much.
Right.
Got it.
Well, I figure if they put in for four hundred thousand, we should give this, we think it's a very.
I, I would hope.
You never know. As you go down, you'll see Frontier Days, the cell tower, that's the kinda steady cost that they pay us.
Right, that's. That's fixed, pretty much.
So that keeps coming, um, everything else again is an estimate, then you go down. So here's where we, we, where we go into these expenditures, this is where we gotta talk about if there's specific projects or things that you, that you need or you want to spend money on in the coming year, this is where it needs to be put. So if you have any projects or anything that you haven't given to Suzanne, now's the time for us to try to fix this and work it in.
Okay. I, to be honest, I haven't looked at this, this thorough, but I'm gonna go back and jump on my bandwagon and beat a dead horse. Do we have money in this budget to equip the well with our own equipment?
That's, this is the general fund.
Oh, that goes somewhere else.
That goes down the water.
Got it.
So you, you know, you can go down through and look at all these. We don't need to go line by line, but we can go to the water. Whoa.
Wow.
It's just going really fast and I don't know where I'm at.
I said, water utility?
And so next month, there's a public hearing of this, and we have to cast the budget this month.
You have to, you have to adopt the tentative budget.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the amended, and then it has to turn into a slip by the bill.
And the, yeah, right. So, yeah, if, if there is anything that you see, you don't have to do it today, but if there's anything you see in the next couple of days, we need to know so that we can.
Sure.
So if you go to the water utility, you can see the water revenue is up some based on, you know, new. So, if you go to the water utility, you can see the water revenue is up some based on, you know, new houses, more customers, those types of things. Um, and then this is where, you know, what you're talking about would come out, so anything that we need to, uh, maybe cover, so the water impact fee, you know, that could.
I, I realize it comes from that, but, and I think originally it was tied to Stuart Ranch's, but we, I know we're just operating year to year on rental stuff.
Yeah, that'll be remedied, and that, that should be covered in the, in the, some of that may be covered in this budget year, twenty-four, twenty-five, and some out of twenty-five, twenty-six.
Got it.
Depends on when those expenses come.
That, the only reason I ask is, I've checked with my suppliers I've dealt with for years, tariffs, everybody's worried about this now, and my people that I talk to, they're not really too concerned with getting hit with a bunch, but they're not saying, you know, a- and if they do, it's not gonna be on the equipment, it's just gonna be on the, uh, steel to build the outside structure.
Right.
You know, but now, I heard today, uh, they, we've settled with, with Europe and, and it's gonna pretty much hold the steel and the aluminum steady.
Well, listen, if, if we don't have this well operational, it's gonna be a public tragedy.
I, I know that. I know that. And, and, and obviously, I'm just looking forward down the road, just, you know.
No, I hear you.
Because, you know, we obviously are gonna need the water.
Oh, yeah, yep. Alright.
See, if they had giant fees for legal connections, we could pay them.
That's right. We covered all of those expenses. Okay, so anyway, if you wanna just take some time over the next few days or whatever, go through it, I, everything, I've looked at it all. Everything seems to be in line, everything balances on both the amended and the tentative, um, but if we need to make any adjustments, if there's a project that you're passionate about, that you wanna see funded or partially funded, we need to make sure that's in there. Otherwise, we'll get ready to be adopted as a tentative and amended budget for next month. Anything else on that?
Okay.
Alright.
Thank you for coming in and helping me.
Yeah. Alright, can I?
Sorry, your lock is down.
That.
Council reports, anything from you guys?
Yeah, Shawna's got a big pothole in front of her house.
Well, it slows people down.
She probably dug it.
Yep, I rented a mini hex and took me home.
That's it, I know people in Oakley that have done that, so.
Oh, are you serious?
Oh, really?
Mm-hmm.
Nice, alright, anything else from council? Planner is absent, Scott?
Speaking of the well, they're running the, um, conduit for the power of the well, as we completely, um, they're pretty close here. They're just about across the highway today, um, so we'll work on that, um, other than that. What else you may have, okay?
Current. Uh, my only mayor report was what you heard. Can't think of anything else either, so.
You did a fine job with that.
I don't know about that, alright. I don't think we need to have a closed session, so, uh.
Go ahead, you know, well, you want me first on this one. Just saying, I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
I'll second it.
Aye, aye.